We're planning board for the May third, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do we have introductions, please?
Molly Friedland, member.
Mark Rich, member.
Nelson Gill, member.
John Delio, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Kangy, Officer.
And why don't we do staff, please?
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Lori Roberts, Code Enforcement.
Thomas Cannon, Fire and Life Safety Inspector.
Liz LaFolfe, Assistant Assistant.
We're gonna get an introduction from the Assistant Code Enforcement Officer.
Bobby Roberts.
Okay.
So we got way more staff than we do people.
We're here for you, Reggie.
So I can see.
Well, Steve's here for three or four of them.
Yes.
Adoption minutes from the April fifth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Move adoption. Nope, sorry.
Just can I ask if there were any additions or deletions?
I have none.
Okay.
Move that they be adopted.
Second.
Second, along with ABA? Moving right along. Okay. Number three, revision to an approved subdivision titled Jesse's Beach subdivision two for applicant RPM Properties LLC and owner RPM Main Enterprises LLC. The proposal is to show the current one-hundred-foot setback along Graham Lake and remove the stormwater buffer label along the lake to prevent confusion. The subject property is approximately twenty-seven acre lot located at Garland Road, tax map one oh seven, lot seventeen in the rural and limited residential zone district. Some here representing.
Steven Salisbury for that owner.
Okay.
You've hit all the high points. It's just, uh, language changes on the plan. No changes to the geometry of any of the lots. And lot ten has now been sold and that deed references on the plan. And the condition, or the conditions of that lot ten wasn't, wasn't to be sold to the apart. So that condition was stricken from the plan.
I get it from the board? Any issues from staff?
No. The only request was to include just the history of the sale of lot ten to meet that previous condition for the final approval from twenty twenty-two. That was added.
To add to the site plan?
Yep, and it added it.
Yep. Again, back to the homeowner, the agreement between Jesse's Beach and then the one in Marigold.
Yes.
That was kind of separate from the site plan. There wasn't any wording on that to the site plan, was there? There was wording for the homeowners association, but.
We, that agreement was finalized before you signed the original plan, so.
But it's not something that has to be included on the site plan?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Is there a motion?
Clearly, it's my turn.
Hello, Karen.
He's gonna do it.
Thank you, Nelson. Well, he is a secretary, so.
That's right.
He's keeping me on it.
Nobody's there for the public hearing. I'll close the bubble here. Okay.
Motion to approve the revision to an approved subdivision entitled Jesse's Beach subdivision two for applicant RPM Properties LLC and owner RPM Main Enterprises LLC.
Yeah, fair. Along with ABA?
Thank you.
Item number four, revision to an approved subdivision entitled Village for applicant Joseph Tredwell and owner Village Way LLC. The proposal is an amendment to a previously approved plan for land subdivision. Amendment is to adjust the ratio of undeveloped common area to number of dwelling units within a cluster subdivision to allow for the consideration of five duplexes instead of five single-family homes. The common lot area is being increased to meet the required eighty thousand square feet for dwelling unit density requirement in the drinking water zone. The subject property is in the approximately one hundred forty acre lot located at Village Way, tax map forty-six, lot nineteen, in the drinking water zone district. Some here representing other applicants.
Steve Salisbury for the Village LLC.
Now, Steve, before you start, I'd ask Matt, seeing as basically you and me and Lori were the only ones here when this initially was approved.
Yes.
I thought Matt would just give the rest of the board a kind of an overview of the pre, you know, what's already been approved.
Sure.
So in twenty seventeen, the project had, wasn't under different ownership at the time, but came for, I think it was four meetings, for sketch, preliminary, final, and discussion of conditions for final approval. And the original plan was for twelve lots, similar to how they're laid out currently on the plans you have at first. Single-family homes, and I think they were supposed to be tiny homes or mini homes, and they eventually evolved into regular single-family homes with garages. And so there was different discussions back at that time. Some of the bigger issues were line of sight for the Village Way Road or Atlanta Highway. And, uh, but it came as a cluster subdivision. That's what's returning as as well within the drinking water zone. But it was approved as just a land subdivision. So it wasn't like a major use, or some major use site development plan. It was just a split of lots on the land. So here, the ownership has since changed and they are revising the plan. It was phase development two back then. The further phases have not come to planning board yet, and so like they may change from what they originally were designed to be. But it's just phase one of what was gonna be a, Steve, a three or four phase, four-phase project.
Okay, and Steve, before you start, just one question I had in mind, and I'm pretty sure you and Matt have had that, this discussion. In the subdivision ordinance, chapter seven in our book, it specifies that if the revision involves the creation of additional lots, which is not, for dwelling units, the procedure for preliminary plan approval shall be followed. So I'm sure you'll address that as to whether. I know you want us to consider it's just a revision, or should it, should this be preliminary plan and come back for a final?
Yeah, I don't know. Nothing, you know, it's game, the lots physically aren't changing size. We're just gonna put duplex homes on, on the lots instead of single families on five of the lots, no need duplexes. And the common lot area was expanded to meet the density ratio.
Okay, give us your.
It's as simple as that. So there's no extra, no extra lots that would be sold individually being created. There's just gonna be lots with duplexes on them that might be sold, or sold as a raw vacant lot with a potential for duplex. I don't know if you have a dwelling unit as a subdivision lot or not. I don't have a stretch, but.
Well, the number of, of units clearly changes though.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's, there's an increase in number of units.
I mean, the initial application, and that's got it, was for a subdivision, but in the application specified that it was gonna be twelve lots with twelve small houses. So, I mean, it specified that there was the number of dwellings that was gonna be in the subdivision, which led me to, you know, that, that section I just quoted is like, okay, well, we're adding dwelling units. We're not adding lots, but we're adding dwelling units. So that was, I wasn't sure whether it should be preliminary and a final or revision.
Right, okay, I guess the, um, I guess the one question is, what do we gain procedurally or any other way making this revision versus a preliminary, whatever we call it, plan review?
Yeah, I'll answer that. I mean, there's.
I mean, obviously it takes longer, but.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I think all the information that we need is here, unless staff has come up with something that Steve hasn't provided.
Um, I mean, there's just one thing, and I guess that Steve knows we're gonna discuss this in terms of the common area size. So they, and when you're doing a cluster subdivision, there's two types of ratios you have to meet. You have to meet the minimum lot size average for the zone that it's in, which is the drinking water zone for this project. That minimum lot size average has to be eighty thousand square feet with the new added common area. They do meet, um, that ratio. But then there's also the density of unit, dwelling units per acre, and that's point five units per acre in drinking water. So essentially you need two acres per dwelling unit to meet that ratio. And right now, the project, if you use an actual acre, which is about forty-three thousand square feet, is one point seven three eight acres off of that, there's essentially one dwelling unit over that ratio. Steve has proposed using the zoning acre definition, which is in our ordinance, but it's not guided on when or how, or if it should ever be used, but just defines it as a unit of land measurement equalling exactly forty thousand square feet. In my conversations with staff and previous planners for the city, they've never used that measurement term before. So that's my opinion that the, there still needs to be added of one point seven three acres to the common area to meet that half a dwelling unit per acre density requirement.
Cass, I, I got a question about, uh, just that in general. So I understand that mathematically, you know, they're, they're hitting the mark, but, I mean, it's only happening because we appended this giant field on the end of a row of houses. So the actual housing density is quite dense, even though mathematically, so I guess my question is like the code or the city, is there any concern that the actual density is quite dense, even though we've kind of gamed it a little bit by, by adding all this property on the side to meet the, the, the actual density? I see it's public water hookups. It's not like well, 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 which I presume would be one of the concerns, but what, what are you guys thinking?
No, I mean, I think if you're going to develop in the drinking water zone, you have to kind of do it in cluster unless you're just doing single-family houses. I mean, the idea is that you're not gonna have too many large housing developments in the drinking water zone, but, uh, I mean, this is the way they do it. There's nothing that would stop them. I mean, there's, they have proper utility plans and.
No, I'm not suggesting it would stop them, just pointing out that it is odd.
Right, I mean.
And I, I don't know if there's actually plans for the common area where it was just purchased and added to make the math work, but it's, it just looks odd.
Okay, it was like a phased plan, so like, uh, the common lot, there, there are other houses that are supposed to go behind this row of houses that would also butt that common lot. And so it'd kind of just be an open space for all those houses.
And the vast majority of this common area was there. They had to include that under the first plan, so, I mean, this whole area has not just been added. It's a question of whether Steve should move that lot on it back a little to increase the common area another one point seven acres from what I, uh, I mean, he.
My question is, is, I guess it's actually kind of less trivial, it's more based on what is the point, I guess? And it's maybe not a conversation for tonight, but like, I'm, I'm kind of not getting it.
The point of what? The common area?
This giant open area, yeah, so we can make the density mathematics work when we're just gonna cluster the houses, like.
I mean, it's supposed to be, so that all these twelve houses, or sorry, twelve lots will have ownership rights in that common area, and they can develop, they can't develop it, but they wanna use it for outdoor recreation in some way, or maybe add a playground to it. A lot owner would have the option for that.
Conceptually, the idea of a cluster, you know, the houses, like, okay, that's supposed to be bang, 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 and everybody having a big wa, a big yard is to go bang, 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 closer together and have a common area then, which is a pretty common kind of way to do it.
Right.
And having the, I mean, and again, if this was pre-approved, it's one thing or whatever. But as you say, you know, having it down here at a thousand feet from the, from the first house, just to the limit of it, doesn't really, to my mind, make it much of a common area. I mean, yeah, it's common, but it's really not ever gonna be used as that idea. And I thi, I don't think it goes in the spirit of what a common area is supposed to be. So that's thing one. Thing two, if the original plan, and I ask this to whoever would like to answer it, okay? Uh, if the, if the original plan had, had said duplexes on it, okay, versus single family, would, is there anything to suggest that the decision of the board back then would have been different at all?
I mean, not from the minutes that I read. I mean, again, like, the major concern was there's a lot of discussion on this line of sight for the road.
Distance at the corner, at the corner?
Right. But density or, um, the capacity to handle the number of dwelling units wasn't discussed beyond the.
So if, if, okay, sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, I'm good now, okay. If, if we had approved some other, let, let's take it away from this, this particular development, and we had approved something like, okay, there's gonna be a single-family house in this property, right? And I'd not, I realize that we don't get into business of, of one unit things. But if, but if it had been approved at one unit, and years later, the person comes back and says, I wanna put duplex there instead, would they ever have to come back before the planning board, or is that merely a code enforcement issue, or, or what?
It depends. I mean, so that's like, uh, I mean, it's a good question, and I think it kind of goes to the original question John asked. So if you take Jesse's Beach, the previous one we just looked at, for example, I mean, like, Steve could have come with plans for those septics to be able to handle duplexes without actually saying there're gonna be duplexes, just the land's been split. We've got septic that can handle duplexes, but the lots are all gonna be sold off. Then whoever buys it can have the capacity to potentially do a duplex if they want to. Those duplexes likely won't have to come to planning board. The lot will get sold, and then the duplex will be built by the owner. And that'd be that. Because this lot, this lot is going to be, as I understand it, under one ownership, and these houses will be rented. I think that potentially changes it, because now we're more of like a commercial venture, and the same owner is adding technically more splits to the subdivision each time. So it kind of complicates.
But they could sell the units individually, right? I mean, if the spirit moved them down the line.
They could, yes.
Sell lot seven.
Yeah, right, yeah, whatever. I mean, it could be all of them individually, or that one there, or whatever, is that, that's right?
But that common area would stay the same?
That common area has to stay as it is.
So can't be sold.
No, the lot, all twelve of those lots, if they're, as they're sold, those new owners will have a one-twelfth interest in the ownership of that common area.
So that's kind of a covenant sort of thing that runs with the land, yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, the only, I mean, one, I wouldn't say the big difference, but one difference between the first plan and this plan is originally, the original plan, each lot had their own septic.
Yes.
In the revision, you can see down in the little corner of the common area, there's a proposed leach field for, I think, for the lots, is that correct?
Yes.
Or five?
And by the turnaround, there's a septic field for lot, um, twelve. Between lot twelve and the key turnaround, there's another septic system on the common land.
In terms of, of the hypothetical sale of these lots to individuals on the line, what happens to a, a common septic drain field if the people who are, the lots that are contributing to that drain field are now split? Did that make sense?
Yeah, they'll have to, you know, put language in the deed that those lot owners are using those.
Some sort of covenant sort of thing.
Leach fields share maintenance.
And is that pretty routine?
So.
Routine enough?
Routine enough, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so it's not like this is a, that would be, this would be the first one.
This is not cutting edge, stop.
Not, oh, damn, okay, that is, that's a little bit for cutting edge.
And I know roads in the future would be able to come through the common area, right?
No. Land really isn't suitable.
It can't be developed at all, so.
Well, notwithstanding, I think the whole thing is pretty hokey, but counting this as common area? I don't know what, I don't know, I don't see any reasonable way around that, and I don't see personally that it's much of a change. I don't know that it has to go through the whole regular law, and it can't just be a revision. But that's, I'm, I'm willing to be, change my mind there, John.
So Village Way LLC also owns the lot behind these units, correct?
Yes, they own hundred and some odd acres.
So then is it out of the question to just add the one point, whatever acreage, to meet our definition?
Good question.
Like, is it simple enough?
No, well, we've allocated, you know, it's gonna take away a couple lots from the future development. And I'll, I'll stand by my argument that, that you use the definite, if, but, but term is defined, you use that definition in the ordinance. If it's not defined, you use common definition, which would be forty-three thousand square feet. But we have a definition of what an acre is in, in the city ordinance.
And does it say, that it says forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty?
No, it says forty thousand square feet is an acre.
So it's wrong in the first place then, right?
Well.
No, that's a common term in zoning ordinances to define acres, forty thousand square feet.
Really?
Well, it used to be, well, so I did, I did some research on this, and I also got a legal opinion on it, because I was.
What's that?
I got a legal opinion on this and did some research on it. So the zoning acre is based on what used to be called a builder, builder's acre, which is like an archaic term really, because people got sued over using it, but they used the rounded forty thousand square feet. For them in real estate, it was misrepresenting things, so people got sued over qualifying that as an acre, builder's acre, or whatever. And so I talked to the lawyer, uh, because the table of uses says units per acre and not units per zoning acre, it suggests that you're using a real acre, and because the, again, the definition of a zoning acre defines the word zoning acre, or the phrase zoning acre as forty thousand square feet, but never, that phrase never appears again in the ordinance. So it's not supposed to be used unless it says use a zoning acre, even where.
So, so, and, and let me just stop you, pause you for a minute. So, so what you're saying is that his use of the zoning acre in this particular instance is not supported?
No.
No, it's not, or?
It's not, right.
Okay. And that was per, as per our illustrious legal defenders?
Yes.
And then one, I think an easy way to look at it, too, is that the ordinance requires eighty thousand square feet in that zone. It doesn't require two zoning acres. It requires eighty thousand square feet. And so then to all of a sudden bring in zoning acre in the mathematics, I think is a stretch. I mean, it says eighty thousand, so that's the figure that should be used, you know, total up however many, eighty thousand times however many lots, and that's when you have the total, and you can convert it to acreage if you want. But it specify, our ordinance specifies eighty thousand square feet.
Uh, just, uh, the previous approval, whether it's, like, whether you use the zoning acre or the actual acre, all of the ratios were met. But this time around, only one of them's met by using real acres versus zoning acres. So I guess maybe what, it didn't seem like in the minutes it was a discussion last time, probably because they just double-checked using real acres and it checked out, so it didn't need to be discussed.
So how big of a deal is it, and I, this was Molly's question, how big a deal is it to just move that private line back and, and that it's further into the field?
It's not a huge deal.
And if the owner was willing to do that, does that make a difference in terms of whether it's revision or a preliminary plan thing?
That would not, no, changing the size of the common area would make a difference, I mean, make a condition of approval that they add.
So, so there's not a need to go through the preliminary approval and the final approval and all that? We could just say it's a revision subject of that?
Yes, because far, I also tried to get an opinion from the lawyer on this, and it was a little unclear, and I wasn't able to track him down to get the answer today. So given the ambiguousness at the moment, I think that would lean towards the applicant. And I think if you provide all the information that you would need to make a decision.
If I ask many more questions, I'm gonna be really confused.
I see, just a, a minor note on the water, your letter to Reggie, I guess it is, on the water usage, you list lot six twice.
Oh, dear.
Sounds like that might have been a mistake.
Yeah.
So actually you.
Yeah, it should be one to five, ten, then eleven.
It's in your favor. You overestimate your water usage, so.
I guess, well, in, in the description of everything, you mentioned that these, these lots, the owners or the, whoever's living there would, would bring their garbage to the end of the road.
Yeah.
But there would not be a dumpster or anything.
I don't know what their long-term plan is, but I presume the city goes out that way and picks up trash for everybody once a week, so.
I mean, I know probably putting a dumpster out there would encourage other non-residents to use it, but I, I kind of worry about, you know, if this is built out to have twelve or could be more, you know, just a pile of garbage bags is gonna be fair game for seagulls and crows and, you know, who cleans up the mess?
Yeah, I mean, that's true everywhere, but.
Is there, I mean, you have a.
Until it's a city street, the city's not gonna come down there and service the street.
That was my question, so they, they don't do that, right? I mean, they don't go down there?
No, not until it's a city street.
How do other subdivisions use it? Uh, how do other subdivisions deal with that problem, when you're like, a street goes out and there's fifteen houses? We, we have any common use stuff in the city? I mean, do we go around seeing piles of garbage, or do they just say, oh, the city's not gonna pick it up, so I'm gonna take all of the dump myself, or?
No, a lot of neighbors kind of put in together to have a dumpster, and they have it privately serviced, uh, between the.
So it'd be a private dumpster on?
One of their, the yards or lots, yeah.
Okay, but that's all to the good of their souls, right?
I mean, you think a trash disposal company, there's a, I guess it's a common area between lot three and four, where the old road used to be.
Yeah, there's some mailboxes there now.
Oh, mailboxes, I just wonder, would that be a place you could put a dumpster, kind of discourage, you know, the neighbors?
Yeah, maybe they do. I, I just don't need as a condition of the subdivision, the developer provide a dumpster. Sort of take care of it somehow or another. I know Cape Quays is a private road next to my house, and I go by there Tuesday morning, and there's a dozen trash bags there. They're gone when I come home.
That's because someone, somebody took it down again. The, the trash.
I have a dumpster, so they don't have to pick up my trash, but.
Now, in the, you don't say in the, either this one or the new one, that the only one up the possible, that this could, road could be turned over to the city?
Yes, that's the long-term plan, yes.
That's the long-term plan. At what point, because, I mean, this road has been there for five and a half years, but it's still a gravel road.
Still needs some work.
At what, yeah, at what point would you envision paving taking place, or?
After it's built out.
Is there anything in the ordinance says that a certain percentage of build-out or houses being built, it has to be paved?
Yeah, uh, it doesn't say it has to be paved, but if you wanna make a city road, you have to have in that zone two-thirds of it built out or something like that before the council will consider adoption.
Right, but I mean, I think originally there was no waiver to not pave it, if I'm not mistaken. So even if it stays a private road, it has to be paved, am I correct?
I think that, that the goal was to pave it. Sorry, maybe I'm missing.
Well, no, it, if it was to remain gravel, wouldn't we have had to grant a waiver to that back five and a half years ago?
How do you mean, if they're going to rent out houses while it's still being built out?
Well, just talking about the paving issue. Keep the city out of it.
Okay, no, they, they planned.
It's privately owned.
Yeah, they planned to build it out and then pave it, rather than.
And by rule, at what point?
Break it up with construction equipment and what have you.
Okay, but I worry about what is the build-out? I mean, it, it's been, granted, there's only two houses there now, but it's been five and a half years since it's approved.
Yeah.
I mean, is it gonna be another five and a half years, two more houses gonna be built?
Oh, we have four foundations in the ground right now, ready to be built on.
I guess I'll leave that to staff to decide, you know, at what point does it need to be paid?
Yeah, what is the threshold, right?
And at this point, I would think a, a new inspection would be, you know, before paving, seeing as it's sat there for five and a half years, eroding.
Oh, we can, we can do that.
Oh, yeah, I would get an engineer report, because we weren't invited to do inspections while they were building it out. But I made sure that the two units that were there, the road existed at least up until those two units, and since then, it had been built further out, so. That was all I cared about, was that they had a way to get in there, and it was built out, at least to private, not city standards, but to.
Any other questions from the board? Staff concerns?
No, just adding that one point seven three eight acres.
I will open a public hearing.
Had the fire agents need to show on the existing plan, uh, he didn't put, he didn't put that on his revision.
Yeah, he did. This is the old plan, I think. They are on the new one.
Tom, does the addition of dwelling units affect your?
No, they're duplexes, so they, they still don't stay as the one that's.
I see, I see two hydrants on there, Tom.
Yeah, I don't ha, I don't have the newest.
Yeah, we didn't have the newest, that's all.
I was still going off to the old one, that's all I had.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Close the public hearing. And then from the board?
So we've bounced it around, but are we settling on as condition of approval, the addition of one point seven three acres from the condition of our hand?
That would be my thought. I mean, I, I don't mind proceeding on this as a revision, instead of doing that as a preliminary and a final. But I believe the additional acreage needs to be added to the common area. I think that we would probably want that in the motion as a condition of approval.
And ask it, right? And ask it again.
Yeah.
I mean, if we want to have the strength of our considered opinion. This is your, it's your turn, isn't it?
Yep, let's get my language spread. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revision to approve subdivision entitled Village for applicant Joseph Treadwell and owner Village Way LLC. The proposal is an amendment to a previously approved plan for land subdivision. The amendment is to adjust the ratio of undeveloped common area to number of dwelling units within the cluster subdivision to allow for the construction of five duplexes instead of five single-family homes. The common lot area is being increased to meet the required eighty thousand square foot, square feet per dwelling unit density requirements in the drinking water zone. The subject property is an approximately one hundred and forty acre lot located at Village Way, tax map forty-six, lot nineteen in the drinking water zoning district. This is on condition of the developer adding one point seven three eight more acres of the common area to fulfill the dwelling unit acre density requirements in the drinking water zone.
I'll second that.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
You read that whole paragraph?
Yeah, I did, you did a great job. Okay, moving on to number five. Final plan review of a minor subdivision entitled Washington Lux Three Ruger Way for applicant owner Ruger Properties LLC. The proposal is to split an existing multifamily residential subdivision existing on one lot into two lots. No matter the development or changes to the property will occur, the subject property is an approximately one point one nine acre lot located in the Free Ruger Way, tax map one thirty, lot one six. Listen, Steve, you represent the owner.
Yes, I represent John Bates. We talked about this last month. Nothing physically is going to change on the property, we're just adding a dividing line. So one of the twelve unit buildings can be sold.
Questions from the board? All the legalized issues been resolved or spelled out?
Indeed, there's a conditions for road care and utility line maintenance and the right of ways also described. My TRT report, I think I missed scratching off snow storage that's been added to the plan, so. Nothing from staff.
Well, I will open up my public hearing, somebody here to comment or question? Okay, close the public hearing. Any wishes of the board?
Yeah, right, I'm going to do that one. A motion to approve the final plan of a minor subdivision entitled Washington Lux slash three Ruger Way for applicant slash owner Ruger Properties LLC.
Second? Second? All in favor? Sounds like we're going to overdo it. Uh, number six, preliminary plan review of a major use site plan entitled proposed commercial development for applicant Allreg USA Acquisition LLC and owner. The proposal is to create a commercial building with three storefronts, including a drive-through and two retail paths. Subject property, approximately two acre lot located at six Down East Highway, tax map one twenty-eight, lot eight, in the commercial zoning district. I'm here representing on the apples.
Good evening. For the record map, I'm basically with Bowler Engineering, we're the civil engineers for, for the project. With me is Sam Berger with Allreg USA, representing the applicant. I'm sure, I'm sure the board board remembers, we were here, I think on March first for a sketch plan review for a project at six Down East Highway. We've since completed our full, full civil design and started our initial traffic assessment. And have submitted for, for preliminary plan submission, hoping to do a final in the coming hearings. Just as a quick reminder, the property is six Down East Highway in front of the Hampton Inn. The property formerly served as like a DPW DOT yard, I think about ten years ago, that was removed. The Walgreens and the Hampton Inn went in and then this parcel was kind of left for, for future development at, at a later date. So as it exists right now, there's some, some utilities serving the Hampton Inn coming through. There's a, a right-in, right-out driveway from Down East Highway heading to the Hampton Inn and then other than that is generally grassed. Property's in the commercial district. The project proposes a six thousand six hundred and fifty square foot building. It's proposed to contain a, a coffee shop. A use which right now we're considering a kind of a small restaurant use at the middle of the building and a retail use at the, at the end cap. We, we went through the layout a bit at the sketch plan meeting, but just, just to rehash, quite a bit of the, the thought process with the layout had to do with the queue of the coffee shop and making sure we had enough queue to keep that onsite and provide a bypass lane. So we have a full thirteen car queue and a full bypass lane around the back of the building. As well, if, if there ever were a need for, for additional queue, it would, if there's additional queuing space in the parking lot, although we wouldn't anticipate that. I know ever since the, the onset of COVID, it seems like there's more and more queue spaces needed. So five spaces doesn't cut it anymore, it's going to be, be twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Since, since the discussion of the sketch plan, we've taken a, a closer look at pedestrian and bicycle racks, things like that. So we've provided a sidewalk from, from Down East Highway up through our site driveway and connecting to our internal sidewalk infrastructure. And I know the board and others have brought up the, the point that, that the Hampton Inn, folks at the Hampton Inn may want to come and walk and get a coffee after, after waking up one early morning. So we've added a sidewalk connection from our property to their parking lot. We proposed a, a trash enclosure, which is going to be fully enclosed and screened. There's a, an outdoor seating patio in front of the, the coffee shop and we have included those potential seats in our, in our parking count. Um, there's, there's fifty total spaces proposed right now, assuming the middle use is a restaurant use. And we've provided ADA spaces compliant with, with ADA regulations and accessibility to all the built-in entrances. For landscaping, the project proposes a full forty-five foot green space between Down East Highway and, and the parking lot in front of the building. We have provided a full landscaping plan with, with our project, we just landscaping throughout the site. Some, some internal islands at the rear of the site along the, along the drive-through, screening the trash enclosure. And then probably most importantly, along the front of the parking lot with a series of street trees and shrubs along the entire frontage of the, of the front parking area. We also submitted a, a lighting plan. All pole lights are proposed to be dark sky compliant. In general, when we're putting together a lighting plan, we usually try to position the lights with their backs up against the property line and have those, those optics pointed towards the site with the shield. It's just the, the least impact to, um, to lighting properties. It was noted that in a couple of locations, our lighting plan exceeds point one at the property line and then it quickly dissipates off. So at this, you know, I would appreciate some input from the board if that's something the board might be amenable to. We could set the, the lighting values below point one, but we do things like make the light poles really shorter and then you'd have a real intense spot and then it would dissipate out. So our preference is to keep it evenly distributed throughout the site. But if, if the board had an issue with that waiver, we'd be happy to, to take a look at revising it. Stormwater, we will be submitting a, or we have completed and submitted a stormwater permit with me and DEP for creating more than twenty thousand square feet of impervious in the Cardbrook watershed. We met with DEP just to discuss our, our treatment strategy and then prepared our stormwater report accordingly. In general, the project's proposing a, a surface sand filter on the left side of the driveway as you're coming into the opposite side of the existing driveway as you come into the site. Um, that treatment practice was chosen because the soils and cider are far less than desirable as far as infiltration, such as silty clay or a silty loam. So there's no ability to infiltrate, so then the next best option would be to provide a filtration practice. One comment we did receive from staff, I think, is there's some concern about surface basins in town and how they might have standing water, which would attract bugs and things like that. This particular basin's going to have a, a filter media layer and it'll be underdrained underneath it to design to filter through and drain it out between all storms. So it's not designed to have any standing water and in fact, there's a piping system to make sure, sure that it's not. So it retains it for a short period after the storms, but it doesn't, it doesn't hold it in. Uh, for traffic, we have completed all that, the trip counts, the, the trip generation and things like that. To be honest, we were hoping to have the, the scoping meeting either before this meeting or, or have it scheduled directly after. I think we're going to have it scheduled soon, but we haven't quite had that, that schedule with me and DEP. But we will be submitting, are completing the traffic movement process with, with DOT. Just, just generally, the trip generation by the project is anticipated to be around three hundred and forty trips in the AM peak hour and three hundred and six trips in the Saturday peak hour. A lot of those trips are going to be pass-by trips, of course, people driving by and grabbing a coffee, about sixty percent of them. We, the counts that have been formed, were formed at the, at the driveway of the site, obviously at the Walgreens, at the Walgreens driveways, both of them, the right end and then the signalized intersection. At the Hanford driveway and then at High Street, at that signalized intersection. I think we did provide some, some initial counts and data, although it's not a full traffic study at, at this stage. That's something we're going to do after the scoping meeting. So we are going to go through that process and city, city will be notified and we expect that'll be a, a big process. One thing we heard from the board, we heard from our traffic engineer and we've heard basically from anyone who's commented on the project is that a lot of traffic is going to use the Hampton Inn access to get through. There's a right-in, right-out on Down East Highway, but if you want to come in from the site coming southerly or if you want to exit, take a left out of the site, you're going to use that access. So I think the trip generations, about fifty percent are going to go that way and fifty percent are going to use the, the right-in, right-out depending on how you're looking at it. One of them, there's, there's four high crash locations near the site. Most of them are, are right around Short Street. I know there's a, a car wash in, in Short Street coming across, so there's been some high crashes there and we suspect DOT will look at that and quite frankly, might assess the impact fees, but we'll have to work with them on that. Just to, to touch base on some of the items that came up through sketch plan meeting and also through staff. One was landscaping along the frontage, which I think we've hopefully addressed, but we'd be happy to go run through that. Mr. DeLeo had pointed out that there would be concerns about a car potentially taking a, an illegal left turn to try to get into the site as you're, as you're coming past it, heading north to south. We kind of contemplated some ideas when being, like wayfinding signage as a signal so people knew to come in. Another thing would be a barrier, although I know, I know fire was, was slightly opposed to that. So that's certainly something we're bringing up with DOT to get a, get a resolution on. How to best address that concern and expect that'll be as part of our final plan. Walkability and bicycle accommodations, I know it came up from a, a couple of different board members. We are proposing a bicycle rack and connectivity both to, to Down East Highway through the site and, and up to the hotel. And then I know Mr. Lyle had had some traffic, he wasn't at the hearing, but he had some comments on, on traffic relative to the impact of intersections, counts, potential future developments, so we expect all that to be incorporated into the final traffic study. For staff, there was a question regarding clarification of the use of the middle building. I know on our plan it's labeled as a restaurant and on the, the architectural is as a retail. I think for our purposes right now, we're carrying it as a restaurant because it has more trip generation and more, more parking demand. I think we'll work with the applicant prior to the final if, if they do have a tenant engaged or not as to whether they might want to consider how they, how they permit that. But for our standpoint, we want it permitted as the, the use of most impact relative to parking traffic, those types of things. Fire had asked for, for a fire hydrant and there was some access. Notes, I think hopefully we've mostly addressed access, but there were a couple of areas where they, they wanted to be able to get the truck through and we'll address that as part of the final. Obviously, the traffic study and, and seeing that and clarification of the access through Hampton Inn is, is something that we'll provide as part of the final. The, the lighting waiver that, that I noted, the potential wayfinding signage, which I know we're working with the applicant, if that's something we can do. There's a lot of entities that kind of own, have little intersections, so we're working that out. And I guess that there were some other comments, but they're all just plain notes and things like that, I think those were the, the big items. So, so that said, our process from the, from forward, aside from completing the city process, will be to complete the DEP process relative to stormwater. And obviously the, the DOT traffic movement process is going to be not just with them, but there'll be a public hearing process with the city. So prior to final, I think hopefully a lot of that will be, be completed and, um, completed and hopefully more, more or less wrapped up. I'd be happy to get into more detail on, on certain things, but I guess I'd open up to questions if the board has any.
Actually, I'll start with you, Tom. So the, the comment on here, the access from Down East Highway will likely need to be changed to allow for fire trucks to be able to turn into the property. So focusing on likely, which means what you saw on paper did look like it would work. And I'm curious if what you imagine the changes need to be are significant enough that they could undermine the traffic study work that they're doing right now with the concept that they have on paper?
Well, our biggest thing was, is I'm talking to my chief about this one as well, was, you know, what direction are we going to come in to the site? Each driver has their, is their own discretion of how that driver's going to go in there. The right way to, the most practical and feasible way to go in would be to come up and then try to loop lap to cross to get up into there. Chief's thing is, is what he would try to like to push is, is just go straight down the others, the other lane and come in through, come in through that access from that side, which makes sense in one way, but you know, not everybody pays attention.
Yeah, I, I guess I see it. So if you're coming that way against traffic, the curved inbound is not going to be in your favor?
No. And the problem, and the thing was, is that for us was even coming across, Hampton Inn has their sign in the triangle right now. So that was one of the discussions was, was potentially seeing about if there's a way to move that sign to be able to just make that a painted, uh, triangle on the ground, so that way it's more free access for, because you're going to be putting it, you know, not just for us, but you're going to be, you know, for deliveries and stuff like that. They're not going to be bringing little box trucks in there, they're going to bring eighteen-wheelers in there. They're going to be able to need to find a way to turn. And our thing was going through the Hampton parking lot is with the pedestrian traffic and stuff like that is more of a high risk. You know, because some, you know, that truck driver, he may be able to see them in time, but people aren't paying attention when they're walking down across that wall. They just got their luggage, they're, they want to go home, they want to put their stuff in, they're leaving.
So just the clarification, where, how would the fire truck or whatever get into the site then if it's coming?
Off down, off Down East.
Yeah, but they would come, uh, so for example, on High Street, if they stayed in the right, in the correct lane, they'd come down, turn left onto Down East Highway and then they'd have to turn left into the site, correct?
They'd turn right into the site. Which way are you, are you coming?
I was coming, yeah, I'm coming. Uh, I was coming, you know, like from the light at Walgreens going towards Down East Highway.
Yep, so you come up by McDonald's and then you're coming up as you're heading up the hill and then you make your left and then right into the site. The other.
Was that you're talking about going on Short Street?
No. Coming up, so you come up, you come up the, by the island and then you look right, immediate left, you can sit there and cut right across and you can get in, you can access the site.
And when you say right, that's what you mean?
Yeah.
Well, if that, if the, if the island that we just cut across has a monovalve curb, does that solve your problem? I mean, that makes it more delineation, you know, more clear than a, a painted something or other.
Right.
But, and.
I mean, we would be, we would be open to options, you know, that's why we're.
Would that be one?
It could be.
Okay.
The other one was, is during peak summertime, stuff like that, the more practical way to go is just to go right up the other side of the road against traffic to get into the site.
And, and, and other than the fact that you go against traffic, that's clearly the easiest way in there. You don't have to screw around with weird curves or anything.
Right. But that's not, that's not an ideal.
If the fire department is good with that approach, then.
It's one approach. It's, it's the approach that we talked about during peak summer hours when the traffic's backed up and you can't, nobody, nobody can move anywhere. That's our only next feasible option is to go that direction.
Okay, so how does that get resolved?
I guess, do you mind if I pull up a plan just so I can try and understand?
So I'm looking at plate C nine oh three, it gives you a turning template of fire trucks.
Oh, okay.
And I'd like your idea of conservative.
This is the, this is the way we want to come.
Right, exactly, they just make a left. Right, exactly, they just make a left. Straight in, I mean...
Well, we...
And it's so early in the month.
This is going by actual...
I already hit your cue.
The road, and they come up and...
Depends how good the mics are.
Secondary, we're coming down this one.
You're either gonna come like this, or you're gonna come...
This is, this is primary.
Okay, yep.
You know, this is gonna be, this is secondary, and the owner should be trying to say, this one is because of...
Yeah, so here's, here's, here's one plan, is to come down here against the traffic.
Weird things.
And go boom. Another plan is to stay on the appropriate traffic lane, come down here, do this, and then they were talking about going like that.
Yeah, that makes so much sense, we can run that one.
Okay? What I was suggesting is that this guy here, which is the existing, have a monoball curb, so that it's way better than just painting it, okay? But the fire truck could just, you know, go off to this point and make a left right in.
Well, I'll go along with Delso's proposal last month, is go down to Short Street, take a left, and take another left on the Down East Highway, and come in the right, right in.
It depends on...
But when you do that, you're cutting across almost five lanes at that point, because you got your two, and you got your two going up, you got your center lane, and then you got your two on your, two on the right. So I gotta cut across essentially five lanes of traffic to get over versus two.
How do you figure cutting across...
I got a Short Street, right? It's a double lane going off.
And you're taking a left turn on to Short Street.
Then you got your center.
You're not going across any lanes of traffic on Short Street.
Not on Short Street, no. I'm talking about when you get over to Down East Highway. You got two going up the hill, you got your center lane, and then you got two coming down the hill. Five lanes.
I think you only have one going up.
Is it one or two?
Maybe one.
Two.
What?
One. Okay. Well, either way, still, still going across, you're still going across essentially four lanes of traffic to get to that other side, to sit there and to make entry into that parking lot, versus me coming up and only having to cut across two.
To me, the only advantage between what he said and what we're talking about here is that it's, this is slightly more direct, but...
But if he's coming in, taking a left turn onto Down East Highway...
Yep.
He's cutting across three lanes of traffic then, correct?
No, correct. Because I'm like, because we're gonna be going...
And actually, it's one going into two, coming off Down East Highway to go to the Main Coast Mall, straight and left.
Yep.
And then the two lanes going onto High Street.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I'm turning into...
It's either three or four lanes of traffic.
Well, I'm cutting, I'm going from my turning into a single lane, and then now all I have to my left is two lanes that I have to get across to get to, get there, to get to that property.
But the, but the key question here, I mean, is not, it's not like there are any signs out there that says, "Fire trucks may come at you," or "Go down to Short Street," or, you know, "Go around the block," or whatever. I mean, it's gonna be the fire guy's decision to do, make an immediate left, or go up and around, or whatever. And for my money, if they're happy with one of those two options, cool.
If they can mount that barrier.
And I, and I, and notwithstanding that, I still think that this should be, you know, a fairly distinct, and a monoball curb would be a good idea.
And when you say monoball curb, do you mean the driveway entrance, or...
No, no, I mean, at that little crossover from Down East Highway to High Street, or whatever it's called at that time. I mean, that would be my view, not necessarily the only.
But I would continue my emphasis on extending that boundable island down, if you look on C301, but if you look on C301...
Oh, right, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, here's, here's, here's the tip of that island.
Yeah.
And here's the, and here's the driveway.
I remember, this came, this came up last time, because there's, there's two arguments. There's an argument to extend the island, because that would discourage non-fire trucks from doing your turn to go buy a coffee, but your salute, your suggestion might actually solve for that. Go ahead and extend it, but extended...
Well, I'm not sure, well, I'm not sure personally that it needs to be extended, because I think if you, if you start extending it, you know, you're talking about, the monoball curb deals with an existing island thing, whatever is out there.
If you go to, if you go to C903 on your plate, in your plates...
Of course, it brings it in closer, so you can kinda see that island, and what he's talking about.
903?
Yeah, C903.
Oh.
These are islands.
Right. So here's the island, like so. Now, the problem with extending it is that that either goes into this lane, or it goes into that lane, because this, this goes down to nothing.
There's no more streets.
Right, exactly.
The concern, when that came up in the conversation, it was a concern with just daily drivers...
Oh, no, I understand, so, I mean, I, I get what the problem is. What I'm saying is, it's, it's non-trivial to extend that island.
Okay. Which is too bad, because that could have solved two...
Oh, it's solved, well, if, if they're willing to cut across the island, though, it says they have to go to Short Street. And I'm not the fire guy saying, gee, that extra 20 seconds is gonna save the world. I mean, I, you know, it's, to me, that's their problem.
I'll still say that that island, whether it's a foot wide or two feet wide, should go down as far, past the right A entrance onto High Street to where the center turn lane starts.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but I don't think there's any way that you can do that with the available space.
That's what engineering is made for.
And that's what money for paving is made for, I guess.
My original question, actually, as fun as solutioning is here, my original question was to the point of, it would be too bad to have to redo any of the traffic study work because of the changes that ultimately get called for are so dramatic that they undermine the original concept. And that was my point.
Yeah, and I think I can't promise there aren't gonna be curbing or curveline modifications, but I don't think it's gonna change the heart of the traffic study. It's not gonna move...
Right, because the traffic study they do is not gonna say, oh, we're gonna have this many illegal lefts or rights, or whatever.
Yeah.
So Matt, Laurie, would the change of this island, would that be under our jurisdiction, or would it be the DOT?
Probably be a joint effort, a joint effort.
But it's DOT's road.
Mm-hmm.
So if you start mucking about with it, widening it, or putting things in it, that's...
At what point, as an urban compact, do we have more control than not being an urban compact? And we have a lot more responsibility because we're an urban compact, taking care of a lot more expenses that DOT used to pay for.
Right.
And now it's our responsibility.
What do we get for that?
Nothing.
Such a bad plan. Why would you want your roads to be an urban compact then? I don't get that, but...
Well, it's based on population.
I don't care what it's based on, and why you didn't wanna do it.
I don't think you have a choice.
Well, that, that would be an answer.
I'm sure there's some benefits someplace.
God bless you. Can we go into some other problem now, or do you wanna talk about that one for a while longer?
Well, before you start on traffic, one other thing, I asked Matt, because last time, we talked about other coffee shops and the lack of their queue...
Queue space.
So, so I had Matt take a look at Elizabeth, at the Dunkin' Donuts up at Bell Mall, the Dunkin' Donuts Kingsville Crossing. I mean, have you shared your figures with them on that?
No, I guess the figures for those aren't gonna be particularly relevant, but based on my conversation with DOT about queuing, because the, all of those constructions happened, I mean, the one that comes and crossing has, is what I guess would be considered sufficient amount of queuing by DOT standards, but DOT would likely like to see about 14 spaces of queuing.
I mean, just to give the board a kind of an indication, because those, those locations are problematic, and they figured out that there was like a five or six-car queue at Forest Avenue with an additional four vehicles waiting to receive their orders, eight to nine-car queue, eight with six cars waiting to pick up the orders. Their project would have a 13-car queue with space for seven at the menu board, and six additional spaces between the pickup window.
But, can I do a, can I do a what?
Sure.
I don't wanna offend you.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, but the difference there is that on both of those other places, they actually, that extra queue actually goes out into the street.
Right, yeah.
In this instance, the extra queue goes into their parking lot.
Right.
And to me, that's no biggie.
No, I don't either, I'm just pointing out...
Oh, yeah, you know, I think we have to be careful about the queuing, don't get me wrong. And I think that's, I mean, that's one of the biggest deals for any development like this, is where, where the hell the queue goes. And, and, you know, for my money, it handles the queue pretty well, because it just, you know, you got, you got a lot of space as it is, which probably meets kind of de facto standards right now, plus you have, you know, a bunch more.
Yeah, yeah. Your data kinda lines up with what we, because we have had traffic engineers look at queues. I think the old standard is like six to eight, and that, that doesn't fly. I think that was 10, you know, a little bit before COVID, and now we've done recent studies.
Well, I thought it was 10, but as a, as a general rule.
Yeah.
But okay. But I agree, but I do agree that COVID has changed it, and has probably changed it forever. So a whole bunch of the stuff that's in these programs and so forth is outdated. I mean, it's just like, it's, that's not the case anymore. For a lot of things, no problem, but for queuing for coffee shops and drive-throughs and stuff like that, you know, you need to, yeah, if you need to make an argument about, and I don't think you have to make one further than this, you know, you need to get your own, get data and so on. But that said, can I go now?
Sure.
Are you sure?
I was gonna say something.
Oh.
So, so you say that, that the queue stays within the parking lot?
Yeah.
To you, it's fine.
It is.
However, if you're, if you're in a parking space trying to get out, and you've got four or five cars in the queue, guess what? You're gonna be concerned that you can't get out of your parking space.
And you, and you will never come back to whatever coffee shop is there, and to me, that's their problem.
Or retail space, or the other retail spaces.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Having been caught both in the queue and in the parking space?
Yeah.
I mean, I get that. To me, at, at, at some point, that's their problem.
I agree.
Because the problem does not go out into the public right away and... And I don't disagree. How far is it from the parking lot immediately before the queue? Okay, there's two lots, right? About two parking areas.
Yeah.
How wide is it from, how wide is the aisle way?
The, the drive out between the parking spaces?
Yes.
24 feet?
24 feet. Don't take a truck.
Mini Cooper.
I used to have one of those, too. But I think it also, but I, but I do think it kinda leads into the next thing, which is, you know, we need to see, I think, or the development needs to have, you know, lots of lane markings and stuff that really, you know, for example, there's this road that comes from, and I just, I'm blown away by the fact that you're gonna use the parking lot of the, you know, in for, as a through street sort of, but if they're good for it, they're good for it. But anyway, but that, that curvy road there, that needs to have, you know, signs and markings that shows that this is a two-way street and so forth, because I don't think that people coming in from the Down East Highway, making that right turn in, are necessarily gonna realize that this is a two-lane road, and it is. So you just need to spice that up a little bit. The other thing is that the, notwithstanding how the other problems solve, but the, the little island, which I guess is existing, okay, that needs to be, that needs, I think, to be reshaped personally, so that as opposed to a, a straight line on the, on the two sides, like a little triangle, and there's straight lines, I think that both, on both sides, it needs to be curved with the, you know, to provide more guidance to the cars coming in and the cars going out. So, small thing. Again, I just am blown away by the fact that, do you guys own Hampton Inn, too? Is that...
No.
Really? They're just, must have paid them a lot, right?
We do have, there are executed easements that were associated with the development of the Hampton Inn...
Okay.
To provide that access road.
Really?
So that access road is actually part of like part of property, and they have access rights to it, which allow us access rights through their law.
Wow.
Yeah, there's several, several evenings, but...
And assuming that you could, so you're gonna have trucks, going back to an earlier point, you're gonna actually have trucks going back and forth on that, do you think?
So...
Like delivery trucks and, you know...
Yeah, yeah, our experience is that Starbucks uses about an SU30, SU40 box truck. They don't have like WB50s or 60s that make the coffee deliveries, and I think the other, the other two use to being a small retail and a...
And they may not be as heavy, given the materials that are carried by, I think, the average coffee delivery truck. I mean, it's all delivery agents of steel, right? Okay.
But now, getting to that point.
Sorry.
To what extent is coming through the Hampton Inn parking lot, either coming or going from the location, any different than Main Coast Mall, Elzo Shopping Center, Martins, Harbor, you know, every shopping center in Elzo, delivery trucks...
Sure.
Customers are going through marking...
My only, my only question there really is, is the, is the road designed to take those trucks? I mean, that's where I was going. And again, that's, in a very real sense, not our daily way, but I just, a precaution. One of the things that, that I am concerned about, though, is that, well, I'm kinda concerned that at the preliminary plant state, or whatever we call where we are now, you know, the traffic study has not been done, because what we're supposed to be doing tonight is saying, oh, everything's, you know, kinda, it may or may not have done well, but everything is kinda done, because the problem is that we're gonna see that traffic study at the time the final thing is submitted. So you're gonna be asking for final approval and for, for a review of a traffic study that we've yet to see, and I don't know...
I don't like that idea.
No, I don't particularly like that idea, because I think, I never liked that idea, but I think it's especially a problem here.
I will note that...
So, what's that?
They have completed all of the preliminary requirements for traffic, though.
Did they?
Yeah.
And we will have the, the public hearing process, I think, with the city.
With the city, with...
And we expect that would happen before, so I don't think we're hoping to come in and be like, you know, here's the traffic, hope it works. I think we're hoping to, to more or less have the, the city sign up and also...
Well, especially if you have questions and say, I don't think it's gonna work.
Yeah, sure, for sure. Yeah, I think we'll hopefully have a good feeling if we're DOT and the city stands.
Okay, speaking of good feelings, though, the traffic signal at Walgreens, now you're gonna have, you're gonna be adding presumably a ton of left turns to that traffic signal. Now, my question is that that traffic signal currently is demand-actuated, I think, okay? And it, it functions extremely poorly, whoever's fault that is, ours, or the state's, or whatever. It's doing a little better lately, but for, you know, you're waiting there with one car for like three or four cycles. My question is that that truly needs to be fixed somehow before you could start using it for, you know, even 10 left turns an hour, or whatever.
Now, actually, I have just a person who can give you some information on that, if Jason will come in out of his office.
Who?
But I don't care what the answer is, really. I mean, it just, it just can't stand.
Yeah, 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 I think...
Okay, so here's a guy who fixed that, that we've added a second.
It's good or no? I agree. I'm sorry?
We put a second.
What, about a month ago or two weeks ago? Okay.
So, that should be correct.
Okay.
He's, he's the man.
So far, so good.
Okay, so you've been, you're gonna be talking with these guys about this whole thing?
We'll need, we're probably gonna need to do traffic, and we're gonna need to change that timing for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because actually, there's a provision in the ordinance that, that they have to look at the whole.
Right, now, and that's the thing, like, traffic analysis study isn't just the driveways, right? Traffic analysis is upstream and downstream intersections that, that somebody, you know, us, uh, deems necessary to do it. So that particular intersection absolutely needs to be done with, you know, your fancy software that you give us a huge, huge pile of stuff and say, the answer's in there somewhere, which I truly hate. But anyway, but that needs to be covered in your traffic analysis study, big time. Um, likewise, that, you know, the turning movements in and out at the intersection on Down East Highway, um, I don't know that, I think that's probably about what I had. So there needs to be, I guess, some more study and resolution of the, of the island and the stream, uh, thing. Oh, I know. Oh, there was one extra thing. Um, in terms of, because access to the site is a little weird, right? You admit that, right? Okay, um, you know, the LL Bean Outlet, for example, has a turn into and turnout of whatever, uh, that says, you know, use this intersection here, even though you're not to the LL Bean Outlet yet. So my problem to, to a degree is that if people coming, uh, kind of southeastbound on High Street, okay, really want to go to the, um, whatever the coffee shop is, um, that they need to be told ahead of time that turn left here, even though you can't see it. I mean, I get that the familiar drivers will do that anyway, but I'm just wondering if it's possible to do that kind of advanced signing either there or, um, oh, on both ends, both ends.
Yeah, one thing we're talking with, with the applicant about is, um, that, that inters, that signalized intersections, but I call it a wave finding sign, it's probably a larger term for it, but a sign that says Starbucks, you know, with an arrow so that they know, take a look in here.
Do it now.
Yeah, do it now.
Okay, wait, I like that, wave finding. It's very cool. It's a, it's a cool thing.
Anything will help, but I mean, there's so much signage along High Street that.
I, I get that, I get that, but you know, what else can you do?
What about those little yellow reflector things that you can, you know, continue on the, the triangle? Literally, people are going to turn there.
Oh, 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 you mean, oh, over, over here on Down East Highway?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a good idea, actually. And the thing is that those are, those are, you know, you hit them and they fall down and they go back up again. I mean, that.
So a fire truck could go over them.
Oh, your car could go over them.
Well, the point would.
I'm not sure, but should.
Yes.
No, 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 but the point is that those are post-mounted delineators, okay? And.
The term, never knew.
Watch and learn. So anyways, you have post-mounted delineators, right? And you have solid ones, and you have collapsible ones. That's what, that's what you would use here, I think.
Do you have ones with spikes?
I think there should be ones with spikes, but I don't think they actually have that in the manual, uniform traffic control devices. I could be wrong.
Can I redirect? The, the light question. So to get ahead of this in, you know, on the off chance, you guys are gonna be asking for a waiver on the light. So it sounded like there was a small, based on your current concept, there's a small amount of spillover, what, like into the street, onto the curb? Is that what we're talking about?
I think specifically it was onto, um, the, the hotel property to the back. I think it was about point four at the property line, and then it tapers to point one and zero.
Oh, it was on the back of the property. So no spillover onto the street or into the.
No, no, yeah. And the reason it's back there is because our drive-through is pretty tight to that parking lot. So even if we put the, the light poles with our backs and shield it to the back, there's just a very slight spillover.
And the spillover to the hotels just onto their parking lot, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Not like onto the units.
Yeah, we hesitate to like light their parking lot, although they might appreciate it, but yeah, it's, it's a commercial.
I mean, so when you talk about spillover, that's where it goes, though?
Yeah.
Are we, I mean, I would, I mean, common sense would say, great, more light in this situation is better, is what common sense would say. But practically speaking, uh, could we even grant that waiver if it's not spilling onto of a property, if somebody else's property? Can we say that's okay to do?
What I would.
Do they need a letter from, from the inn saying more lights?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
What I would probably do is, we could work with the applicant to find the Hampton Inn's lighting plan and see where their light spills out. It's already kind of bright over there, so even though their light plan.
Yeah, my guess is, yeah.
May show that the foot candles may be excessive. It may just get washed out anyway by existing light.
Just try to get ahead of the waiver request, so we don't have to.
No, no, yeah, good point.
So that's.
Or like a letter from the Hampton Inn saying, yeah, more light's good.
I've been done.
Yep. What? I find that hard to believe.
It's almost ten to seven. I agree, Doc. I've got a lot of time for this discussion.
Any other questions from the board? I will open it, Karen, if I didn't do it last time. So I think there's a gentleman behind you that.
Excuse me?
We missed out.
He's another applicant.
Oh, okay. Never, I thought it might have been the guy from Finelli's Pizza.
He's done.
Oh, okay. And I'll close the public hearing. But did, did you give him, that the owner of Finelli's Pizza his information? He, last, last time I didn't open the public hearing, the owner of Finelli's Pizza was here. His concern was that this, a lot of people go through his parking lot to make huge turns and probably other properties there too. Uh, he just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. It was my mistake that I didn't have the public hearing before you guys left, and he's hung around till the end.
I don't think we need a motion.
Your turn, Mike.
Do you want staff comments?
This is a polling or anything?
Yeah, yeah. We approve it as being sweet or something.
Uh, can I just go over staff comments?
Sure.
Oh, sure, sorry.
Uh, you can all, pretty much everything, but, um, there is some concern about the access through the Hampton Inn parking lot. I'm just making sure, it wasn't really constructed to handle a hundred fifty trips. Just making sure that it can handle that many. I'm sure the traffic study will go into that. But just wanted to make sure we definitely see that. Um, there are a lot of small things in the plans that were necessary for preliminary to get changed, um, for final, for sure. Um, the question about Fire Act or for parking, so in the architectural plans, it shows outdoor seating for the coffee shop. And on the site plan, um, with the outdoor seating, there'd be a requirement of fifty-one spaces. There's only fifty shown on the plan, so there has to be a parking reduction waiver in addition for the board to grant for that one spot, or they can find one more spot, either or. But it's not a huge, huge deal, because that's something we can't get around. Uh, then we also just like, again, both the, the outdoor seating, we put on the plan to show all the seating, um, so we can calculate the parking properly. And then, um, to address the stormwater retention system, as long as it, I think, um, while talking to you, so for about maybe a day at most for the largest type of storm, it'd be tested.
Yeah, yeah, I think less than, yeah, it's designed to drain between storms.
Yeah, so, um, that shouldn't be a problem. But on that, yeah, traffic from that access way through the Hampton Inn is a sticking point for staff.
I, I just have one more comment about the, can I do this? No? Hmm, okay. One more comment about the traffic impact study. One of the real problems that alluded to before is that, you know, you get this stack of, of computer printout, right? And it's like there's forty pages of stuff. And I actually know what those forty pages are, but nobody else does. And I, you know, it's, it's too hard to wade through. So my point is that there needs to be a good succinct summary, okay, of what the key points are here. Good news, the bad news, whatever, okay? If something's reducing in the level of service or changing, which it obviously will, I'm, well, not obviously, but I'm pretty sure it will at this intersection up here, at the Walgreens. You know, that kind of, that kind of stuff needs to be highlighted and, and pointed out, so. Because even though I understand it, I don't actually want to wade through it.
Fair enough.
That's it.
Cool.
That's it.
I mean, getting back to traffic, I mean, Jay, I mean, if there is any improvements that need to be made to that, that whole timing system, because, uh, you may have to readjust the timing in that Walgreens, but you may have to readjust the timing downstream and upstream, which is on the developer's cost.
I don't want to scare the developer, but in a worst-case scenario, the traffic movement permit process may end up changing a lot of the plans for traffic. So it's kind of, we have to have, go through that before we can officially, you know, worst case.
No, fair, no, yeah, we understand.
Anything else?
That's all?
Anything?
Good.
So on the language for the motion, there's quite a lot of homework left on this one. So we're definitely not finding it complete.
It's complete relative to the, the guidelines that staff gives them. Completeness doesn't, it's complete in the sense that they've covered all the, covered all the bases. Doesn't mean they necessarily covered them well. And all of our comments, in theory at least, were directions of getting to, yeah, you did it, but really, to you did it and you're done. At least that's my understanding.
Complete, just from the literal definition of the plan. Close motion. We find complete a preliminary plan review of major use site plan titled proposed commercial development for applicant All rig USA acquisitions LLC and owner Elsworth number one LLC. The proposal is to create a commercial building with three storefronts, including a drive-through and two retail pads. Subject property is an approximately two-acre lot located at six Down East Highway, tax map one twenty-eight, lot eight, in the commercial zoning district.
Second.
And all of it.
Thank you so much for the comments. We really appreciate it. We'll make sure to address those for the next one. And also, just thanks to staff again. Um, it's been unbelievably easy to work with.
You too.
See you again.
I think there were post-DOT.
Not all done. Depends on who the enemy is.
Well, if it's somebody new, right?
Yes.
New again. Again, again.
And then Bruce Masson got done.
What's that?
I said Bruce Masson got done, and then another engineer got done. And it said, another engineer is on it.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so number seven, final plan review of a minor subdivision entitled Langley Graylist LLC for owner applicant Brian Langley. Proposal is to create a triplex structure, creating a three-dwelling unit structure subdivision. The subject property is an approximately one-point-two-acre lot located nineteen South Street, map one thirty-four, lot two fourteen dash one, in the neighborhood zoning district. Someone here representing the applicant.
Nicholas Wood, representing Brian Langley in Davis.
The floor is yours.
I believe last time we, um, there was a consideration about the stormwater. Um, I added to the narrative that we're gonna address the issue. We've actually addressed it. Um, the stormwater at the end of the road going across South Street into the Indian River, we added, um, I did the, the calculations of that complete area multiplied by one-point-two. And then that ended up being around, um, six-point-five. We ended up doing two thirty-inch culverts, which ended up covering nine-point-eight square feet. So we went up, up and beyond, it's a long story short, after the last storm we just had, took a picture and it was good. It was minimal.
Good picture?
A very good picture, yeah. I mean, upstream, the neighbor that was concerned about the stormwater on her property, a lot over, it was probably a quarter of both culverts, uh, water coming out. And Brian's culverts, we had two that are much bigger, and there's probably an eighth of the whole circumference of the culvert. It was minimal.
I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot of culvert.
Yeah, it's a lot of water, but we have much more, knowing any culvert size. I think that was the, the biggest concern from last meeting.
That, that might, that's my comment.
Yep.
I'll just go over some smaller changes that were added to the plan.
What's that?
Though, there was talks and concerns about where a dump truck or a propane truck would back in, um, next to that sixth spot, and it's just more reflected that that'll be a, a widened spot of about twenty feet. Um, that width was added as long as fencing around the back to show, um, screening for the dumpster and for the propane tank. And then the, you know, a couple vegetation was added on the plan for the board's request, just to give an idea of where they'll be doing some new plantings, uh, for trees. And uh, the width for the driveway was added, um, we had twenty, twenty-foot width to show emergency access for the fire show.
Now, if I remember correctly, the last meeting, uh, the plan was to have a gravel parking lot.
It is, yep.
But, um, because in his letter, shall have a paved, all-weathered driving surface.
Great.
Paved as in paved with asphalt?
Per the ordinance.
Per the ordinance. And your response might be?
Uh, to, I mean, uh, cost, that's fairly expensive to pave, and also impervious surfaces versus impervious surfaces of the water. I mean, you want to make sure that we're not just creating more of a funnel to have the water not seep in. I mean, gravel does seep. I mean, it does help with water mitigation.
And what's your concern?
The ordinance states that any commercial subdivision property shall be all-weathered and paved. Per the article. That's written in my letter.
Now, are we getting, is this, dealing just recently with an issue of paving and, and who has power over paving, uh?
Yeah.
We're dealing with a treehouse subdivision, basically, is the weather, we have, we grant a waiver, or the fire department grants a waiver.
No, that's.
As far as I know, we settled that, that.
The board grants a waiver.
And we.
For, for this, for this type of property, for this road, so the access road in is a private residential road, uh, the board, with ADT of less than fifty, so then the board would grant the waiver for paving on that road. Now, if Tom's talking about the parking lot, that's different than waiver for the road in. Wish we'd had this discussion.
What kind of, kind of got me wondering about another thing. I mean, the road with driveway, whatever you want to call it, going into the, into the triplex, has, has been named Langley Way. That could staff, I mean, I'm thinking, and this is on South Street, let, let's say this lot is number fifty, South Street. Is, is there an objection? Is, is it better, worse than to say, this is address number fifty dash one, dash two, dash three, apartment one, apartment two, apartment three, rather than having another private road on the list of private roads? Because if, if someone's going to fifty South Street, pretty much all the police and fire department's gonna know where it is. If somebody goes to Langley Way, it's like, oh, where the heck's Langley Way?
Well, so the ordinance states if a driveway serves more than two dwelling units, it becomes a private residential road. And since there's three dwelling units in this triplex, by the ordinance, it becomes a private residential road. Um, there's not really a waiver for that. So that's why it's.
And maybe it was before the ordinance was changed, but there's apartment complexes in Elsworth that don't, Eastland Park, Bridgethe Apartments. I mean, there's numerous ones that don't have ways. It's just, okay.
I mean, I talked to the assessor about it, and he agreed that it would be a private road because it's, because it, it serves the three dwellings.
He's a decision, decision maker on that.
I kind of think. Larry strikes again. So I guess getting back to the, the paving issue, is that, so whose daily look is that?
I mean, so, again, I don't.
Is that waiverable? Is that non-wavable?
The, the private road in would be.
Tom's shaking his head no.
Well, the private road in would be waiverable. The parking area, I don't think, is the same as the private road, so that might not be waiverable.
Well, it'd be kind of foolish to have the parking lot paved and a.
Gravel road leading to.
Right.
Parking lot.
Right. But my, my, my ordinance doesn't differentiate between parking area and that, that way. It says all subdivision shall be paved.
I'm sorry, so you're saying your ordinance applies to both the driveway and the?
It, yeah, it doesn't differentiate between the two. It doesn't have a, like, it says this and it says this. It says all. Then how if we granted that in the past? We haven't. We have.
But I guess getting back to, I mean, mass discussion with your chief on the paving issue, when we were talking.
Right, we're talking, we're talking single-family homes versus apartment building. Two totally different. So you don't consider the retention of single-family homes under ownership to rent them out as a commercial subdivision? Because when you go with single-family homes, you go by the, by the ordinance of single-family homes and stuff like that, it has a completely definition. If you go by apartments, which is what this is following by, it has an incomplete separate in, in the ordinance, it says that it says it shall have.
So there seems to be inconsistency to a certain degree in the ordinance, but.
There is a, yeah, between mine and.
There isn't, yeah, to me, mine in chapter fifty-six, there is inconsistency, mine says one thing, it says something different.
That would be an inconsistency.
We go with what, with who is the more stringent, and that's the one that we usually follow by, and then.
And that's yours.
That's mine.
But how does, how does this three-unit differ than the tiny-ass subdivision, which your chief says he can recommend whether we grant a waiver for paving, but it's up to the planning board to decide whether it's granted or not? How is that different? That's a fifteen-lot subdivision, this is a one-lot subdivision.
I'm talking single-family homes versus apartment building. There's a, once you get past one and two-family dwellings, there's a completely separate definition for what the guidance for one and two-family dwellings is versus apartment buildings, what, what the requirements are.
So it's the individual structures themselves.
Does a request for waiver have to originate with you, or can we just do it?
I think it starts with the applicant, the applicant puts it in the request of a notice to me, and then it gets brought to, with, then I put a letter forward, whether if we want to accept that, and then brings it to the board for their decision to accept or not.
Okay, so even if you recommend it against the waiver, we could still approve a waiver?
Might have to look into that.
I think.
Do you have any input, Mike?
I think part of the difference is the wording "commercial." When you start getting into residential subdivision versus a subdivision that is commercial, now when you start getting into three, when you, when you start having rentals of, of that nature, then that's commercial, and that's how, I believe, the NFPA talks about differentiation between residential subdivision and a commercial subdivision.
Okay, so then what exactly? Sorry to keep dragging in the, the treehouse subdivision, but that's a commercial subdivision according to you, because it's going to be for rentals.
Okay, so they're going to need to ask for a waiver for, for, or their.
Okay, and presumably they will.
Yeah, but like the villages, that's residential, okay, versus the apartment house, versus the churches. But just like the, the apartments behind the chos, okay, those are all commercial, that's all a commercial subdivision, because those are all rental units, and I think that's where the difference comes in between commercial and residential.
Well, you said the treehouse can request a waiver.
I believe so.
Is it?
And I believe they are planning on requesting a waiver for the, not for the main road, but for the off, the offside roads.
Right, so, is that on?
But to add on to Mike's thing, to differentiate, once you get into a three or more, you're talking an apartment building, you're talking commercial. You sit there and talk about, you know, you talk about the, the treehouses, or we talk about the village way, those are one and two-family. Those are still considered, we consider those residential. So once you get above two, you're going apartment, you're going commercial.
They're residential, even though they're going to be.
Correct, they're still, they're considered apartment buildings, they're considered commercial.
Gotcha.
The Michael has to do occupancy.
That's, that's just how they define it in the book.
Occupancy type, but it's one and two-family or more.
So, if they wanted to ask, they would need to ask for a waiver, and the waiver needs to be acted, acted upon before we can give them final approval, is that right?
Correct.
Trying to think if they could just ask for it right now.
Sitting, sitting on happily.
They can't, because I have to do it with my fire letter. I have to put it in my fire letter, basically signing off to saying that I have sat there and they have met all the criteria as far as the fire, as far as DRT and the fire letter is concerned, to say to the board, hey, everything's good, here's my letter, I'm signed it, we're, we can move forward.
Can it not be a condition of approval?
No, I need to have, I need the letter stating exactly what they're looking for waivers, and then I know exactly the correct wording to respond back into a letter to them to say which way I'm going, to then correct my previous letter, do an amendment to my fire letter, to then present back to the board.
That's what it goes, seems to me that, I mean, the applicant at the last meeting made it well-known that they wanted to keep it gravel. If fire says it has to be paved, it seems like better communication should have happened between the applicant and staff to prevent where we're at right now, which, what it sounds like is that if you want to keep it gravel, you have to apply to the fire department for a waiver and come back for another meeting. Am I missing something?
No.
You're right.
I have a question, is gravel considered impervious or pervious?
Impervious.
Impervious, so is pavement considered impervious?
Yeah.
So whether it's gravel or pavement, it's still considered an impervious surface, one way or the other.
Because it's compacted.
Well, you can actually design pavements that are.
Okay, which is going to be cheaper.
Oh, I didn't, I thought wasn't.
We're going to, Rick, we're going to have to get it from Ohio, because that's the only place, the only plant that makes that stuff right now.
So, to kind of summarize, I think the only path to a potential approval tonight is if the applicant agrees right now to pave.
Yeah.
Now, it wasn't known about this last time, that'd be, we all said, wouldn't we? I mean, kind of surprise. Doesn't feel fair, love, it's okay.
And so you can't break ground until this is solved, right?
Correct.
When we're planning on breaking the ground?
Interest keeps on accruing.
I'm sorry?
Interest keeps on accruing.
Yeah, 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 I truly understand that. How far are you from breaking ground?
We're, we're putting the road in right now, we're ready for concrete. Houses are here, from Pennsylvania.
They're here in Pennsylvania?
They're, they're here from Pennsylvania.
Oh, from Pennsylvania.
From Pennsylvania, yep.
Interesting definition, but, uh, okay.
Well, so on another note, we talked last week about the, you providing a drawing of the high-challenge firewall for these buildings. I don't see one, but I understand that you have received some information from the Attorney General's office?
Yes.
You have a letter from him stating that you do not have to do that?
The correspondence was not through me, it was through PFS, our engineering firm, and it was also through Apex, which is our manufacturer, which is, uses PFS. They have the letter I can provide, I don't have that.
I, I would request this board, before you sign off on this, that that letter be part of the permanent record. The reason why is you now have a three-unit apartment house without any fire protection whatsoever, other than one hour firewalls between them. Now, the idea is that because it's a manufactured home, based upon what I believe the Attorney General's office says, that they don't need to do that. I've been, I was a fire inspector for thirty years in this, in this city, and I don't know of one three-unit apartment that's not either sprinkled or has a two-hour fi, high-challenge firewall on it. We've got buildings that are going up right now that have sprinkles or have high-challenge firewall on it. According to the fire, according to the Attorney General's office, they don't have to do that. Now, I can't, I'm not going to argue with the Attorney General, but my suggestion is, before you sign off, you make sure you have a letter stating that, because if something does happen, and somebody does get hurt because of the fire in that building, you don't want to be held responsible. I think the fire, I think the Attorney General's office letter needs to be part of the permanent record.
But at this point, our hands are tied, aren't they?
What's that?
Our hands are tied this evening.
Absolutely, we're talking with the, talking with the State Fire Marshal's office, because it's a manufactured home, and because of the building codes, et cetera, the state building codes, that's where we stand. However, the issue becomes that the city of Elsworth is not just a MUBEC or a building code town, we also have adopted by ordinance, one-on-one life safety code that requires either a sprinkler system or the two-hour challenge firewall. I believe the Attorney General's office says that's not a battle that we want to fight. I don't know why, but the fact of the matter is, I would like to see that letter as a permanent record.
Next, go ahead.
I'm just, given the circumstances, that this is an issue I didn't know was going to come up tonight either, would the board be opposed to having a special meeting?
Well, that's where I was wanting, I mean, in terms of, can we, it seems, relatively speaking, these are relatively, I don't know that we have to wait a whole month to resolve this, if we can resolve it some way sooner.
Well, if this engineer's got the letter, all it is, faxing it.
Exactly, yeah.
To Matt.
It's the paving waiver.
We got two things, yeah.
I mean, what, I have no, what's the quickest with notification?
I mean, two weeks. So if I have to spread everything together, it'd have to be in the next two issues of the American, so Thursday next week, and the Thursday after that, and then we could have a meeting that following week.
With a, with a one, one.
One item agenda.
One item agenda.
Condition one item agenda.
Yeah, I'm going to try and sneak in again.
No.
I, I don't see an alternative.
Sorry. That's what it is, yeah.
But, at least it's only presumably two weeks as opposed to four weeks, so, it's going to rain a lot anyway.
Ready for it, though, it does.
So what does the motion look like, or do we just table this? You have, you have to have a motion to have it tabled. So we can make a motion to approve it, and then we, and then someone could say, I would like, whatever they say.
No sense making a motion in the whole.
I think we can make the decision to table it, and then.
I'm sorry, say again?
I think you don't, I don't think you have to have a motion to.
Don't you?
I think you just say you're going, you can make a motion to table it, and then.
To table this after.
I think we need to take so much, I think that can be the action.
Okay, I'm in, whatever, right?
For the date of the special meeting, just want to keep it on the Wednesday?
I'm sorry?
For the date of the special meeting, just want to keep it on the Wednesday?
Good question.
So we're talking about the seventeenth, and that'd be two weeks from today.
That's not a reason for you guys?
Works remain. Works remain.
I guess it depends, Matt, on what the quickest.
No, it would have to be on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's all right?
It would have to be on the twenty-fourth, because it would have to run in the, on the eleventh and the eighteenth in the paper. I can't get something in for tomorrow's paper, so it would have to run on the eleventh and the eighteenth.
So we can do some of that in the eighteenth?
No, the paper would have, would have to run on the eleventh and the eighteenth, and then we could hold the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
I guess. So it's three weeks.
We'll get into the.
Versus four.
The whole notification issue, for as much as the city has discussed it, whether it be in print or on the website, can the legal notification just be on the website? Has to be.
The board has to be posted in the paper.
In the paper.
Man, we just have postcards.
And with a paper date of the, the print date of the eighteenth, the twenty-fourth is the soonest, it's not about Wednesday, that's the soonest date.
Then I have to look at when it could be Monday.
I think you have to have.
They have to be so many days.
After.
That's the steering committee.
Right.
Of course, if the steering committee had two more guys, you know, we'd be there.
Yeah. I have an idea, I have an idea this meeting is only going to take five minutes.
If, if that.
So I guess, whatever the earliest date is, you can get it scheduled by whatever notification has to be done.
So we're just tabling consideration of this, is that what we're going to do?
Yes.
Can I, can I start that?
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I think we need a motion.
Yeah.
So make a motion to table the preliminary plan review, uh, I'm sorry, well, never mind. Make a motion to table the consideration of final plan review for a minor subdivision entitled Langley Rayless LLC for owner applicant Brian Langley.
Give us a second.
Second.
And we'll move as fast as we possibly can to get this resolved. Sorry, did we decide it? We decided, whichever one's.
ASAP is.
Yeah.
One of those two.
I guess we'll go on the staff comments?
We had this meeting. Staff must not have many comments then, right?
I'm, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I stay important one.
Cohorts. Go ahead, sorry.
The staff comment.
You're ready to go, aren't you?
One year, one year.
One year.
Mostly just a comprehensive plan update for those who are not in the steering committee. We've met with the, at the last steering committee meeting, they met with the consultant over the work plan, draft work plan, draft schedule. So we seem pretty set on some opening public engagement activities. We're planning on a open-house expo-style type of public engagement, either in the parklet or outside somewhere where tourists and passersby can attend, see the table set up, and kind of learn about the comprehensive plan on June fourteenth, and then we'll schedule something similar on a weekend, a similar style event, so that we capture a different, you know, section of the population. We'll be doing, staff and steering committee volunteers will be doing tabling at lots of local events coming up through May and June, including like the library open house, and June's Walk, which is an event being put on by Heart of Elsworth and Burris Mart Main, and then, and the Historical Society, I think. And then, right now, they're, the consultant in doing work has put together a social pinpoint website, which is a public engagement tool, which is a map of the city, and people can drop, you know, comments, thoughts for improvements or strengths that the city has, and that'll be launching soon, and.
Is it moderated?
Yes, so the consultant will moderate it on a regular basis, and also self-moderate in some ways, particularly for like foul language, and that sort of thing. And then, but other than that, they're also working on the inventory analysis phase of the plans, they're looking through publicly available plans, gathering the data they can, and then they'll provide a request for information to myself and other staff to kind of fill in the gaps, and then from there, it'll turn over to the steering committee to also fill in any gaps that staff misses. That's where we're at with that.
Any other staff comments from, any other staff members? Want to congratulate us on a job well done?
Congratulations.
You got one more motion, Mike?
Oh, adjourn please.
Adjourn line.
We're out of here.